Calling the September 17th Norfolk School Committee to order. I'll begin this meeting, as we always do, by reading our mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Can I have a roll call, please?
Lauren Vivas.
Peter Schwalbe.
Midora Champagne.
Lisa Sheldon.
Victoria Sladano.
Ingrid Allardy.
Great. So, we are here tonight before our joint meeting with the Select Board. We have two things we need to vote on tonight. One is the PTO, Anticipated Fundraisers, for this upcoming school year, as well as some school anticipated fundraisers. For the PTO, we have the Chair of the Parent-Teacher Organization here with us tonight, just to give a really quick overview of the PTO and to explain the new fundraisers for this year. Go ahead, Jen.
Very good. So, I'm Jen Wolfe. I'm the Chair of the--
Recording in progress.
Sorry. I'm the--
That was for the Select Board.
All right. So, I'm the Chair of the PTO. And as many of you are aware, the purpose of the PTO is really threefold. So, we do a number of community-building events. So, those include things like Heritage Night and some of our family events that we do throughout the year to enhance some of the community aspects. Then we have a lot of our curriculum enhancements. So, this year, we were able to do some supplemental materials with the new ELA curriculum, as well as a YES Engineering Program and things throughout the year. And then, our third mission is to support the teachers and staff. We do a number of teacher and staff appreciation events throughout the year. And, of course, all of those things cost money. And so, we do do a number of fundraisers throughout the year in order to support those initiatives. This year, we have the return of many of those events that we've done in the past, many favorite events for the town and for the school. So, those include favorites like bingo nights, trivia nights that we do for the kids, and that we do for the adults. We have movie nights that we have not actually done for a few years, but we're going to have the return of some movie nights this year. We have bake sales that you'll see at some of the open houses. There's a few sixth-grade activities. And we have fully consolidated sixth-grade events into the PTO now. So, all of those sixth-grade events are listed here now. Artsonia is one that, I don't know if folks are aware, that Artsonia is something that we partnered the art teacher on at Freeman Kennedy. And so, she takes pictures of the kids' art and uploads those. And then, parents get emails where they're able to order different products throughout the year that have pictures of their kids' art, t-shirts, and mugs, and all kinds of really exciting things that are great for grandparents. We have our friend directory that we do every year, and that's a way for people to connect. And we do, last year, we started our Growing Together fundraiser, which was a huge success, and we had a lot of fun with, and were able to fund the box program through that, which the sign-up for that goes live tomorrow. So, kids will be able to get, 100 kids now, and 100 kids in the spring will be able to get free before care with the gym teachers. That was funded through that. That includes our online auction, which was also a huge hit. And we had some folks here who did movie afternoons, and the teachers did all kinds of really fun events as part of that, that we auctioned off. And we have our restaurant fundraisers. We have a family photo shoot with one of the teachers at the school this year, who also does photography, Kate Carlson. We have a candle sale, a holiday card fundraiser with minted and school spiritware that's sold throughout the year and then shipped to families. There's a lot of things. We also have a big event, it's actually our biggest event this year, that's a new thing. It's called the Booster-a-thon. And this is something where we've partnered with this outside company, who thankfully does most of the work for us, so we don't have to rely on volunteers and all of those things. As part of this, last year, we had charged families for spirit shirts, and we had been able to donate shirts to teachers and staff. This year, we're going to be able to give shirts to every single child and every single teacher and staff member to enhance our sense of community and school spirit as part of that Booster-a-thon. It's really a two-week event that includes all of this, just building of the excitement about being in school, getting kids excited about being there. We wanted to do it towards the beginning of the year, so that we can really get kids excited about walking in that door and knowing that school is a fun place to build our community and to learn together. And they, so the company has all kinds of things that they'll do during lunchtime and that they will do in the morning announcements. The kids do sign up. There's incentives if they get the whole class to sign up for mybooster.com, and then they can share that to get pledges to support kids through that. But the grand finale of this is that they do an all-school fundraiser. So, this is something that we wanted to do because of the inclusivity, that this is a fun run, that everybody in the school is able to be a part of. The teachers, the staff, the kids, it doesn't matter if your parents work or don't work, or if you can pay for it or not pay for it, everybody can participate in this event. And several local schools have done that, and said that it was a really exciting time for their school. So, that is the new Booster-a-thon event, where we have, so it would start, sign-ups would start in September, and then the actual event would be October 16th, where they do the fun run at school.
So, they do it during the day?
They do it during the day.
Okay.
It's a lot. It is a lot.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, I would be looking for a motion to approve the PTO anticipated fundraisers for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
A second.
Any further discussion?
Second the plug for Artsonia during the holidays. Fantastic.
Can I just ask a quick question on the Booster-a-thon?
Yes.
Is there any, like, do you ever show how much a child is able to raise at all, or is that all private?
So, it is new to us. I think they see how much they have raised, but I don't think that it's made public.
So, it's not like on the wall in the classroom, like, this person has the most, this person wasn't able to do anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And it is new to us. So, they do get incentives along the way, so the company has prizes that they'll give to people. And they will have all of these goals throughout the year, so, not the year, throughout those two weeks. So, like, if they get to 80% of people that sign up for it, not how much money they get--
So, it's not all monetary, okay.
Right. So, if they just sign up, if we get 80% of people to sign up, then they might get an all-school pajama day. We're trying to decide on the incentives. And then, if they actually reach the overall school fundraising goal, which is $35,000, then I think the thing might be to turn the principals into hot fudge sundaes, but it hasn't been confirmed yet.
Okay.
Okay. I had a quick question about the donations from the room parents for the raffles. I think there's like a deadline. I think I got an email in regards to it. So, I've just had some questions from other parents as well, because I don't want the events baskets as anticipated. So, is the deadline for those, like, well before the events, that those are going to take place? So, you know, like, and is there still somebody, like, on the PTO that's working that event that's, I guess, creating raffle baskets in addition? I'm just, my fear is, like, the room parents don't come up with enough or don't provide them, and then you guys are left with nothing for the raffles or minimal items?
Good question. So, we try to set it up thinking about how many raffle baskets we'll need for each event, and then how many classes there are in each grade.
Okay.
And so, and we don't need that many. So, even if we have three baskets, it's great.
Okay.
And so, we figure out, like, how many classes does this grade have and this grade? And sometimes, we'll do two grades at a time for a bigger event and things like that.
So, are the room parents expected to, like, actually build the baskets, or they just throw the donations and you guys build them kind of thing?
They put together the actual basket.
Okay.
And that can be done either by donations from parents, or it can be that the room parent asks for donations from a local business and get a gift card or anything like that.
Okay.
I think I would just say, I think, as Lisa mentioned, the only thing that I'd want to make sure of, and I'm sure that because this is done in a lot of schools, the company has the capacity to do it, is just the privacy for individual students may opt not to sign up or not to participate, just so that's not public within the classroom and students don't feel that pressure. So, I would just want to have you just check with the company on how that can be managed. And I'm sure that's done in lots of places, so.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
All right. Then, we have one more, which is the anticipated school promotions. This is from Lisa Altman-Hickey. This is approving, this is going through the PTO. So, we are now on the PTO list?
Yeah. Artsonia is on both, but I think she listed it separately, just in case. These are two additional things that the school does annually outside of the PTO. One is run through the Phys Ed program. It's Jump Rope for Heart, and it's part of heart health awareness. And the proceeds raised for that go to the American Heart Association. And then, they do various collections, donations, and things during the holiday season to support families in need. So, those are the two additional Freeman fundraisers. HOD will present theirs in the October meeting.
Okay. Perfect. So, I would be looking for a motion to approve the two school anticipated fundraisers for Freeman.
So moved.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, that is it for our individual meeting. So, now, we're in the Select Board. There you go. Look at us.
Are you? Touch the chaos.
You? Excuse me?
I had a wig.
It is, wow, 7:00. That is efficient.
On the nose.
That is efficient.
Beautiful. Thank you, Andrew.
Good evening. And welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's Meeting of Monday, September 17th. My name is Jim Leehan. I am joined by our associates Anita Beckenburg and Mr. Kevin Roach. We are also joined this evening by the Norfolk School Committee, which I would like to welcome up. And I'd like the Chair, Lisa, to please introduce your members.
This is Midora Champagne, Grace Lockhead, Peter Schwalbe, and Lauren Vivas, and Lisa Sheldon.
Welcome to all of you. Thank you. The agenda this evening, before we get into the normal business of our board, we're going to have a joint meeting with the committee to allow them, then, at the conclusion of that, to hopefully stay, but free to adjourn if they so choose. And we'll get into the public comment at that point in time. So, we will go right into the joint meeting if that's agreeable with everybody.
Okay.
We have really two issues on the agenda this evening. One is regarding some budget transfer discussions, and we're going to have a presentation from the School Building Project Committee, which we all look forward to. We have copies. We've read through them, but we look forward to hearing it from your perspective. Just as a comment, I know one of the issues is whether or not it would go on the warrant, and I know that's something we will discuss this evening, but that won't be part of this joint meeting. That discussion will take place when we get into the warrant article as part of our normal business. So, hopefully, that's agreeable. But this section will be an opportunity for the committee to ask questions, a good give and take, see where we are, and we look forward to your presentation. So, Justin, I'm going to turn it over to you to start the first item, which is--
Excuse me, Jim?
Sir?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. That is a terrible thing to forget. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. So, we do have some budget transfer considerations, and I'm going to ask Justin to give us some background on it.
Right. For the first item, I'll take a first crack at it, and then the superintendent can elaborate. But in the Board's packet, I believe it's in the school committee's as well, there was a memo from me on July 25th regarding the state budget. And there were some additional appropriations allocated for Chapter 70 funding. There was a discussion previously at a joint meeting with both Boards about allocating those funds. So, there is also a memo in the Board's packet from the superintendent allocating, requesting those funds be appropriate at Fall Town Meeting. The total amount, because there were actually some charter school reimbursement costs, would be $69,089, which is the net increase for Chapter 70 funds. And, you know, I believe the Board has known about this, so we just wanted to put it on the radar. This would be something for a Fall Town Meeting.
I think, I don't have a lot to add to that. Chapter 70 funding is intended to support schools in offsetting operating costs, and the increase in Chapter 70 for regional schools goes directly to the regional schools, but for other school systems, it goes to the town to appropriate. So, we are requesting that the additional Chapter 70 be restored to the school budget or allocated, transferred to the school budget.
Well, I think the issue is pretty straightforward, and it's a board decision. But Kevin, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Anita?
No, it seems really appropriate.
Neither do I. I think we should certainly approve that transfer. We did meet with the Chair and the Superintendent earlier, and the one concern we had was in terms of the budget process for the following year. And there was agreement that the budget we built off of the existing budget as passed by Town Meeting and not inclusive of these funds. I believe, well, let's find out, do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous vote.
Next item?
Yes, sir.
I actually will defer to, I don't know if Ingrid or Vicki regarding this, the ELA curriculum. I would like them to talk about this.
I can start, Vicki, and you can certainly jump in. So, during the budget process last year, we spoke with the Select Board as well as the Advisory Board. It was a difficult financial year across the board for all town departments, and we were all looking to make reductions and try to come to Town Meeting with a balanced budget. We also, because of changes to state regulations and to state requirements for ELA curriculum, had to move forward with the purchase of a new ELA program. We, as a district, had spent two years looking at what was out there, vetting programs, looking at the research, and making sure that we recommended a program that was going to meet the needs of the district, but also be appropriate and approved by the state. The cost of that one-time adoption was significant. When we were talking about budget reductions, we had spoken with the town, and in collaboration, we did make some cuts, and we only appropriated funding for the first half of the adoption. We had discussed maybe bringing that forward as a capital item. That's what several other regional towns had done, because it's a single one-time cost, and it allowed us to not lay off additional teachers and staff. So, we are bringing that forward for consideration. Vicki, I don't know if you have anything additional to add to that?
Yeah, sure. So, like, the cost was significant, but it wasn't out of the norm of what programs cost nowadays. The landscape for how programs are now presented has really shifted over the last 10 years. So, we did select a program that was average as programs cost, you know what I mean? Because, and the reason for the increase in cost overall is just that they offer so many resources now, because the state has set such high requirements for how we educate its students, especially in such a rich area as, like, English language arts, there's so many different components. So, yes, I just wanted to kind of offer that also. And the state has also, has very strict parameters around what they consider high-quality programming. So, we're also have to kind of meet those standards when we're looking to adopt new programs for our district. And I think what we selected has been a really successful rollout so far. We, I've been visiting classrooms. The teachers are very excited about the resources. They all received rich selection of books for their libraries, so they're really able to tailor to the needs of the students in front of them, to be able to offer, like, a rich variety of reading selections. So, that has been, I think, the most exciting addition to what the program has offered.
And just for reference, so, our district does have a 10-year curriculum review cycle. So, we review all of our core programs every five years. That's about the time when it's appropriate to take another look. New research comes out, new materials comes out. So, we look at each program, every core content area, every five years. Our curriculum review cycle is posted online. Up until this time, and I've been in Norfolk since 2012, all of the curriculum adoptions have always been funded through the operating budget. But this was a really challenging year. Again, we did reduce many staff members, and we have a math program adoption that we have to look at next year. The committee does have the flexibility of paying this bill over two years if we can't, but it's going to put us in a double deficit next year in terms of appropriating enough funds in the operating to offset the cost of the math program. So, we are hoping to be able to consider a budget transfer for that, so that we can continue to fund new curriculum through the operating as best we can.
Questions? Any, please?
Are there grant opportunities to help subsidize these purchases?
We've already, and Vicki can speak to it more, but we are actively pursuing a potential grant for the math adoption. We did apply, and there were no funding sources for the ELA. We explored that pretty in-depth in the spring. It's challenging, because there were earlier monies, but the prioritized districts that had high incidence rates for low income and other qualifying factors that didn't fit Norfolk's demographics. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah. So, I, well, in terms of math, we just submitted a grant that I'm hoping will be approved to help offset the costs, like I said, but there's kind of, depending on the state's, you know, how we qualify and what competitive other towns we have. And we're constantly looking to opportunities to offset, you know what I mean? So, any, we got some title grants that, it was very minuscule amounts, but we did flex, like, some of the ELA PD into it to help offset the cost. So, we're always trying to work with. And I know that the, our PTO, as I mentioned before, has helped us offset some of the supplementary materials. So, like, we're trying to leverage all our resources as best as possible.
Thank you. Stated.
Kevin?
No questions.
No questions? Okay. I don't have any questions either, other than just, as you mentioned, these normally are capital items. And it would be helpful if, I know you have a capital plan. We have not seen it.
Well, you have our long-range, five-year capital plan for technology and for facilities. We've never brought curriculum capital items before. That was just, came up in the budget cycle last year in the spring.
Do you have any, I mean, do you have any other, other than for technology and basically facilities? Do you have any other capital items in the works?
No.
Okay. And the amount you're looking for is?
$100,000.
Okay. Questions? Any more? Okay.
Well, I guess the only thing that I would add, and so, Dr. Allardy and I have collaborated on that, because of the budgetary challenges, we're trying to be transparent about some of the other curriculum items that may be coming forward. I would ask that if we do this as a budget transfer request, I'm, because we wouldn't incorporate this as part of our capital, right? It would be part of our budget transfers and be at Fall Town Meeting, is that if we, if that's something that the Board wants us to consider, that we take it holistically as part of our capital and budget transfer item, because we do capital stabilization transfers, we do, you know, stabilization transfers, et cetera. So, there's a whole host of things. So, I would just say, you know, if the Board's interested in doing that, we look at it holistically there. When Todd and I do that capital process, we'll incorporate Dr. Allardy and our team with that to make the decision.
Yeah. I agree with that completely. I support this personally, and I do think it should be part of the package for capital transfers. This, to me, is a capital item. I just, traditionally has what we treated them, so, yeah, I would support this. Any other questions?
And from personal experience, new curriculum is very exciting for the schools. So, it's a really exciting opportunity for the schools and for our students, and so, I'm pleased to support it, even though it pinches.
Kevin? All set?
Yep.
Okay.
So, do you need a motion?
Well, I'm not sure this is listed as an action item. I think we would want to deal with this at a later item, later point, but you have our support. So, and now, I think we're up to a school building project presentation.
Yes.
Welcome.
Grace, do you want to enter the committee? Yes. So, thank you for your time. My name is Grace Lockhead. I am the Chair of the Building Committee. I am joined by Midora Champagne, who is the Vice Chair, and our town community members. We have Mike Lucarello here in the room. Mike Ryan and Jason Whelan were also critical members of the team, obviously with Ingrid and Justin as well. So, we are going to be doing a presentation mostly led by Dr. Allardy, but also by Justin Tebow of AI3, who's been a wonderful partner. So, we'll pass it over to Ingrid.
All right. So, thank you. So, we did just present this to the school committee at our last meeting, which was just last Tuesday. But we will update the Select Board as well. But if anybody in the public wants to see that, the presentation was also recorded by Norfolk Cable and is available online. So, just for context, the, we have been working on looking at different solutions and ways to manage our enrollment growth since back in 2017. So, in 2017, Norfolk was experiencing significant growth through a variety of building projects. There was significant concern around town about how, with this, the rate of growth, the schools were going to absorb students coming into the district. So, a space study committee was formed. We had partners, there were representatives on that committee from the town side, as well as from the school side. And we thought the best course of action was to begin by doing a long-term demographic study. So, we hired NESDEC to take a look at the long-range forecasts for the town. We were predicting, based on that study, that we were going to see continued steady growth. The COVID pandemic set that off a little bit, but we did have that study, and that committee looked at several different possible solutions, including a building expansion project at the Freeman Kennedy, a potential, we did look preliminarily at a potential modular solution, and we also considered whether or not we should be thinking about a third site, a different early childhood center. The committee reviewed all of those potential costs and the educational impact. And the recommendation of that committee was to move forward with a high-level conceptual design study to see if a building expansion could meet the projected needs. We ruled out the idea of a third site. We ruled out the idea of modulators because of costs and feasibility. So, in 2018, at Town Meeting, we requested funding for the town to hire Flansford Architects to do a high-level conceptual design study. So, what that really was looking at was what we would need to accommodate in terms of additional classrooms and office space, the NESDEC-projected enrollment growth. And with the space that we had, potentially connecting the two back wings in the Freeman, could we fit in enough classrooms that we could create a one-project solution that would alleviate the space crunch in both sites? So, that was done back in 2018. We presented the results of that study to the Select Board in 2019. And at that time, the Select Board and the school committee voted to go forward with submitting an application to the MSBA, Mass. School Building Association, for joint funding to see if we would be offered entry into the MSBA program. Unfortunately, we were not invited in the first round, but highly encouraged to reapply in the spring of 2021, which we did. We applied the second time. With COVID, MSBA priorities shifted slightly. They were really looking at schools that had significant issues with infrastructure, HVAC, air quality. Those were prioritized. We again decided, well, we'll try one more time, and we applied again in the--
So we are going to be doing a presentation mostly led by Dr. Allardy, but also by Justin Tebow of AI3, who's been a wonderful partner. So we'll pass it over to Ingrid.
All right, so thank you. So we did just present this to the school committee at our last meeting, which was just last Tuesday, but we will update the select board as well. But if anybody in the public wants to see that, other presentation was also recorded by Norfolk Cable and is available online. So just for context, the, we have been working on looking at different solutions and ways to manage our enrollment growth since back in 2017. So in 2017, Norfolk was experiencing significant growth through a variety of building projects. There was significant concern around town about how with this, the rate of growth, the schools were going to absorb students coming into the district. So a space study committee was formed. We had partners, there were representatives on that committee from the town side as well as from the school side, and we thought the best course of action was to begin by doing a long-term demographic study. So we hired NESDEC to take a look at the long-range forecast for the town. We were predicting, based on that study, that we were going to see continued steady growth. The COVID pandemic set that off a little bit, but we did have that study, and that committee looked at several different possible solutions, including a building expansion project at the Freeman Kennedy, a potential, we did look preliminarily at a potential modular solution, and we also considered whether or not we should be thinking about a third site, a different early childhood center. The committee reviewed all of those potential costs and the educational impact, and the recommendation of that committee was to move forward with a high-level conceptual design study to see if a building expansion could meet the projected needs. We ruled out the idea of a third site. We ruled out the idea of modulators because of costs and feasibility. So in 2018, at town meeting, we requested funding for the town to hire Flansford Architects to do a high-level conceptual design study. So what that really was looking at was what we would need to accommodate in terms of additional classrooms and office space, the NESDEC-projected enrollment growth. And with the space that we had, potentially connecting the two back wings in the Freeman, could we fit in enough classrooms that we could create a one-project solution that would alleviate the space crunch in both sites? So that was done back in 2018. We presented the results of that study to the select board in 2019, and at that time, the select board and the school committee voted to go forward with submitting an application to the MSBA, Mass School Building Association, for joint funding to see if we would be offered entry into the MSBA program. Unfortunately, we were not invited in the first round, but highly encouraged to reapply in the spring of 2021, which we did. We applied the second time. With COVID, MSBA priorities shifted slightly. They were really looking at schools that had significant issues with infrastructure, HVAC, air quality. Those were prioritized. We again decided, well, we'll try one more time, and we applied again in the spring of 2022. So we went through three rounds of applications. 2022, we were also not invited to apply. There are just so many critical needs across schools, all across the Commonwealth. If you look at their acceptance rate from last year, there are schools that were built in the 1950s that are now getting funded, and it's a low percentage. So at that time, we moved forward with asking the town to appropriate funding for a full feasibility study. We knew conceptually that this would work, and we asked the town meeting for funds to do a high-level, full feasibility that would look at traffic patterns, would look at site work, would look at capacity, design, redo a new enrollment study to make sure we were still on track. Town voted to appropriate those funds. We went through a process of public bidding for an architectural firm to conduct that study. We conducted interviews of several firms with, again, a committee with town and school representatives, and we selected AI3. AI3 was, came on board in the fall of 2022, and they spent about 14 months on the full feasibility study. That full report is available online on our website. It's, it's rich reading. It's a couple hundred pages, but it's very detailed, the results of all the testing and studies they did. Based on that study, we moved forward in the spring of 2023. We were prepared to come forward with a recommendation to the town to move on with the, a Warren article to seek funding for the design phase of that portion. Given the difficult budgets and challenges and the aftermath of COVID, we were asked to take a step back and reconsider another expanded feasibility to reevaluate the modulators and other possible solutions to make sure this was still the most cost-effective solution. Again, town meeting voted and appropriated funds for that additional feasibility study. We also requested appointing a town building committee. So the town, select board interviewed community members and appointed three community members for the building committee, also two members of the school committee. Justin and myself participated in that, per the town bylaws. That feasibility just took about, really, all throughout this year, and now we're here again to present an update of the findings from that study and our final recommendations. Again, you've seen this because the select board wrote the charge and voted to the charge. The charge for the committee was to explore the feasibility of module solutions and enrollment growth, to review and evaluate and select a new demographer. So this was our third demographic study, and it was with a completely independent demographer that was respected in the field. We interviewed, we reviewed applications and packets from several, and the building committee selected one. And then to look at the existing feasibility study, explore the modulators, and make a final recommendation to the town for the best way, best option to move forward for accommodating this increase in growth. That was the charge. Scope of work, we looked at the new demographic study, which was presented to both the school committee and the, at a joint meeting of the school committee and the select board. Then we looked at reevaluating the permanent building module option to see what changed, what costs could be eliminated, or what that would look like if we were to bid it now a year later. And then we looked at three different modular options, costs associated with all of those, and then, again, prepared to recommend a specific solution. As you can see, again, we have a demographic study looking at the long-range forecast from 2024 on, but you can see enrollment growth has been steady in the district from 2014. It's just been steadily climbing. We had a brief dip after COVID. When we returned, we had more students that were enrolled in homeschool plans or private school. That is recovering, and we're seeing that growth return. As the demographic study indicated, the biggest area where we see growth is in the early childhood years. So we have had higher and higher kindergarten classes coming in, and, and once kids enter the district, they stay with us. There's very little outward mobility. So once kids enroll, they're staying with us. So as those larger classes are enrolling and enrolling up, we're seeing growth across both sites. That's predicted to continue steadily over the next 10 years with another couple hundred students expected. If you look by building, again, in the 10-year snapshot, you can see the enrollment in H Olive Day is almost 100 more students than we had back in 2014. Freeman's growth is at a slower rate, again, because this is hitting as the higher classes are rolling up. But we're up about 40 students at the Freeman, 135 overall. HOD, we've talked many, many times about the space crunch that we have there. We're going to be doing some community tours. We have repurposed many, many spaces in that, in that building. We have music serving students on a cart. We have done some structural work to enclose a server in order to create some additional instructional space. We have a partition walls up in the library to create an office for our library so that we can run the program. Our computer lab is non-existent. It's now a classroom, and we operate that off of the stage. We have a very, we have so many students that we have to run two gym classes at a time to get all the students into phys ed. So our cafeteria that's available for lunch is only one-third of that giant room. So we've had to split some of our larger classes into multiple lunches. The teachers jokingly say they're bringing their children to brunch because it starts around 10:45 in the morning. So that's just a picture of the enrollment. I think from here, we turn it to Justin, who can help talk through. Again, this is just another overall shot of what the demographic forecast looks like. You can see continued steady growth from '24 through 2034. And I'll turn it to Justin.
Yeah, thank you, superintendent. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Justin Tebow. I'm a principal at AI3 Architects, and we're working with the town on the feasibility study here. We've been with the town for approximately two years. We did the study previously, and then we are doing the study now for the modular configuration. So what this slide here represents is the previous work that was completed in 2023, what the results were from a high level, how big is the projected project? Based upon the updated demographics that superintendent mentioned from DAA, we reconfirmed the actual size of the recommended building. So what you can see here is the number of classrooms remains at 33 at Freeman Kennedy. The number of pre-K classrooms remains at seven, and the total project size remains at just north of 36,000 square feet. And that represents all of the required amenities, support staff, et cetera, for teaching and learning within that facility. So what's up on the screen here, what I'm going to go through in a little bit more detail are all the different options that the committee reviewed and modified. We went back and forth, and ultimately, this is the outcome of the four choices and selections that the committee discussed and voted on. Starting from left to right, the left is the permanent building option. So this is the same option that was presented just over a year ago as the brick-and-mortar option, connecting, as superintendent mentioned, connecting the two wings on the backside of the academic core, creating that loop for the students. The next option to the right is what we're calling modular. It's option one. So this is a two-story configuration, and this is as close to, an apples-to-apples comparison to the brick-and-mortar. It's connecting, again, it's connecting the two academic wings across the back, closing that circle and trying to maximize efficiency within that space. Moving one more to the right is option two. This is also a two-story option, but what we've done is actually locate it outside of that existing access road and existing utilities. Again, trying to, to save some cost by moving the building away and not disturbing existing utilities, and to fit within the property boundaries and the site constraints, it's now a little bit of an L configuration. And then option three for the, the modular is all the way to the right, is what happens if we take the two stories and make it a single story instead? So you're avoiding stairs, you're avoiding elevators. What does that start to look like? And as you can see, the footprint doubles. You go from two stories to one story. So it no longer fits within that back portion of the site where originally was planned. So the single story needs to move to that front open field space that is currently existing. Excellent. So zooming in a little bit to each of these four options before we start talking about, about costs. So this is the, the permanent building addition. Again, it directly connects the existing building. It's the same building type, and it would be a seamless connection from one academic wing into this new center space, and then you can circulate around the perimeter and throughout the facility. It would require some redirecting of that service road, so that would have to push out slightly to avoid the new construction. Minimal tree removal because it's within that existing open space, but it would connect, again, those two academic wings seamlessly. And the configuration, if you go to the next slide, is, the conceptual floor plans are right here. And again, these are what was presented approximately a year ago, and this became the basis for all the modulars. So.
Can I just jump in here? So just to clarify, because we talked about the number of classrooms, what the, what the intent of the addition was, was to create seven preschool classrooms. It allows us to relocate the five existing pre-K classrooms and the special ed offices from HOD over to the first floor of an addition. That frees up enough space at the H Olive Day to absorb the projected future growth there. Upstairs, again, Freeman has 27 classrooms. This would give us 33, six additional classrooms for the Freeman Kennedy building. So in all of the designs we looked at, that's what we were trying to fit in, was the seven preschool, the six additional classrooms plus office space.
Yep, absolutely. So yeah, the first floor here is that pre-K and special education component. The addition is the actual zone outlined in red, and to also add the items in green or the spaces in green. These are spaces that can be reallocated because, so based upon the existing overcrowding, previous spaces were lost. For instance, science labs or teacher collaboration spaces, et cetera. So these spaces are being repurposed to what the original intent was, based upon the, the addition being added here. So that's what the green spaces are. It's existing spaces that are being repurposed back to what they were originally intended to, to be utilized for. One thing to note about the, the pre-K component, it is a little bit different from a grade level configuration. It's the littles, it's the littlest kids there, so there would be doors that were walked, so older students couldn't just freely walk into the pre-K component. However, there would be a direct connection for safety, security, and supervision through card access to allow access in and out of that pre-K component, a controlled access. If we go to the next floor, you can see, so this is that second floor. This is where the six new classrooms are located in the, in the addition component, as well as locating the art, relocating the art classroom to the space, as well as some additional spaces, like a steam classroom, which is the, the science lab. The reason that.
I was just going to say, so because we did a full-scale feasibility study, we looked at if we had this addition and we needed additional classrooms, we have grade-level classroom wings, so we have all of the fifth-grade classes in one wing. In order to add more classes to that wing, we would have to take the art room out of that room and move it. So we did some theoretical relocating of spaces in order to make more sense if we, but they aren't additional. They're just, what's in green would be moving to create better efficiencies and fluency.
Right. Yeah, a prime example are the three spaces all the way on the right, the speech, the social work, and the psychologist. Those would be located centrally to all the students, not down an academic wing or an academic hallway, but again, easy access to all students for, for everybody within the facility. So if we go to the next slide, you can start to see how this lays out on the site plan. Again, you can, you can see the traffic patterns and circulation. The intent is that there would be a separate parking and drop-off zone for the pre-K component. So this would be utilized for only that, and the elementary school would still be accessed from the front as it currently is. You can also see the required pre-K play area on the bottom in blue. Again, a state requirement for students of this age. And it would have its own, essentially its own front entry and zone and area, and that would be monitored by the Special Education Administration moving over to this building that the superintendent mentioned that is coming over from, from HOD. Next slide. So moving into the modular options, this is the option that we tried to get as close to apples-to-apples as a comparison standpoint. So again, connecting the two, the two academic wings. One thing about modulators is that it's a different type of building construction, so there are some hurdles that we do have to go through just from a building code and a constructibility component, but those have been addressed, and that added cost is included in the, in the cost that you will see in the near future, based upon what would be required to actually physically connect this building to the existing Freeman Kennedy. Next slide. Looking at the floor plan, a little bit different, we are utilizing the modular unit. Think of it like a Lego block or a Duplo. It's, it's a repeat over and over again. We do have some flexibility with where, how we subdivide the units and/or remove some walls, but ultimately, we're still landing within this modular grid and modular units throughout. So it's very linear, and the intent is that all of the same program spaces for pre-K would be located here as the permanent build would be located on the first floor here for this configuration. Floor two is a little bit, a little bit unique in that because it is a modular configuration, we are looking at what would happen for an entire grade level to be located there. Because for consistent, consistency throughout all of the options, and it'll make a little bit more sense once we get to options two and three, an entire class would have to be located in the single zone for the modulars. So that would make up an entire class within that, that modular unit on the, on the right.
So that would be like one grade level, because in a modular solution, it doesn't make sense to move the art room and the science lab, because especially in ones that are not connected, that would mean every student in the building would have to pack up, get their winter boots on and trudge to art. So we looked at educationally what we would, what would make more sense in a modular. It would be to put all of, all of sixth grade, or all of fifth grade, or one grade in there, rather than relocate those other spaces, because it just wouldn't be efficient educationally for kids, for everybody to have to leave the building for music or art or science.
Now, this, this one here, is this building attached?
Yeah, what this, this, we wanted to do an apples-to-apples comparison, so this would be, this is the only of the modular options that we could connect. We have to build, and Justin can speak to it more than I can, but to attach it physically to Freeman, you have to have a special firewall because of the way the building is zoned. You can probably explain that better than I can.
Yeah, exactly. There's, there's area limitations based upon building type, based on occupancy, and what we would have to do to physically connect modulators is, is build a firewall, a freestanding firewall with multiple sets of doors that are rated, that would open and close depending on the event that is occurring to do it. So you can do it, and the zones in orange on the slides and in the screen, that would be the area required to, to build these vestibule, rated vestibule areas to allow this to occur. There is a premium to it because of all the unique constraints and, and constructibility components, but it is possible, and that added cost is included in the numbers that are.
Okay. It is included in the episode.
Yeah, so because the intent of option one, again, is trying to get apples-to-apples. So if the, the permanent building option is actually connected, we wanted to try having option one be connected as well. It wasn't a true apples-to-apples if you had to walk outside.
Okay, well, I was.
We looked at it both ways.
Okay, yeah, before she said the kid needs to put on the boots and trudge through the snow to get there or whatever, but.
Right. We looked at this both ways. I should clarify, we originally looked at it as a standalone, and it wasn't connected. And when we looked at, and we'll get into it when we talk about the other options, we felt that was not a good, for safety concerns, for time on learning, that wasn't the best option. So we priced it both ways, and then we looked at what it would cost to actually physically connect this. So this is, the quotes in your packet reflect the connected cost. The other two obviously are not connected.
Right. Yep, exactly. So site plan, again, very similar to the permanent build. Again, it's just more, a little bit more of a linear scheme, and yeah, same amenities, parking, playgrounds, et cetera, within the project. Next slide. Option two, this is the two-story that is detached, so it's located outside of that access road. Again, this is one of the options that superintendent's referencing, where students would have to actually physically go outside to another, another building or another facility. It maintains that existing access road, but again, as you can see, it gets pretty tight in the back there to, to fit just that square footage of that new, of that new modular unit. Looking at a site plan perspective, again, all of the, the modular site plans still provide the same amenities. Little bit different configurations, but again, we're still providing dedicated parking for all the pre-K component. We're, we're also providing the required playground area. We're also providing the required playground area and creating that entry zone for those, the pre-K students. Again, you can start to see here, you would have to circulate and cross either the parking area or along that upper part through the sidewalk exactly right through there to get to the new modulars from the existing building for this option here. And then the option three for the modulars is a single story. Again, it's taking it the same, approximately the same square footage as all the other ones, so 36,000 square feet is the footprint instead of 18,000 square feet. It's located in that field up towards the top, up towards the front of the building, just because it's so much larger than the other ones. Again, we, it doesn't impact that perimeter access road, but utilities would have to be run even further to get up to that zone. And obviously, it doesn't impact trees, but it impacts open space, field space, athletic space, et cetera. And this is how the site plan could, could look. This one actually can utilize a little bit of the existing parking in that upper right, but again, there'd have to be some reconfiguration based on access roads and the rest to provide the pre-K, dedicated pre-K zone and area within it. So those are the four building configuration options. To confuse it even more, we have two finish level options for the modulars. So we have a finish level A on the left and a finish level B on the right. Finish level A is, to boil it down, it's more expensive than B, but it's also more durable. So some of the differences between finish level A and finish level B, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of them. So finish level A on the left, you actually have foundation walls. Finish level B, you're on pier foundations. Finish level A, you have fiber cement siding. Finish level B, it's texture 111, it's plywood paneling for siding. Finish level A, you get aluminum windows. Finish level B, you're vinyl windows. Looking at some of the interior finishes, finish level A has porcelain tile on the floors in the bathroom, whereas finish level B has VCT, vinyl composite tile, and even in the corridors on the walls. So finish level A has porcelain tile on the walls, whereas finish level B has fiberglass panels on the walls. One other item to note at the bottom is the mechanical system. So finish level A, it's been priced for air source heat pumps for the classrooms, so these are fewer units on the roof of the actual modular component, whereas finish level B are wall-hung units. So your through-wall units that you typically see in hotels, that type of unit. Again, the unit is right within the space, a little bit more noisy, but there, as you experience in hotels, that's what that type of system would be. So there's an A and a B price level for all of the modular options. There isn't an A and a B for the permanent building, and the reason being, the permanent building would match the finishes of the existing Freeman Kennedy. So it's not gonna look like an addition. The intent is to match materials and levels of finish globally for that. So now, if we look at that matrix again, with prices associated with each of these options. So starting again, left to right, the permanent building addition, it's 37.9 million. Modular option one, level A is 34.9, level B is 32.2. Option two is, level A is 30.4, and level B is 27.6. And then option three, level A is 31.3, and level B is 28.5 million. Now, a couple items that I did want to flag here, it's the four items on the bottom. Through conversations, it was noted for additional capital improvement items, just within the existing Freeman Kennedy. So it's looking at replacing some existing mechanical systems and units, upgrades, or updates to the playgrounds and a fire alarm. So these items here are outside of the numbers above, so like the 37.9, the 34.9, et cetera, but they were priced to be included, meaning if the contractor was already on site, what would it cost additional to include these capital items as well? So that's that configuration of what all of those numbers are.
And I just wanna jump on on a couple things there. The additional capital items, that was a request from the town when we did the original feasibility study a couple of years ago, because some of the mechanical equipment at FK is at end of life. So the rooftop chillers are reaching end of life, and there was a question of if we move forward the building project, will the town save money to repair some of these things at the same time when we already have a crew mobilized and a crane on site? So those are not part of the scope of any building project, and the town will be looking at having to take these on at a separate time. But we priced them to see if there would be savings.
Now, do they give, there's one set of prices here. Do they give a separate set of pricing if they're not there, whether versus there? So this is the price if they're there, but we don't know the prices if they're not there.
This is what it would cost if we just priced it with the estimating company of what it would cost if you did this as part of a building project. We can get pricing, or the town might choose to get pricing if we don't move forward and make the decision whether it's worth it to do it at the same time or not.
Right, yeah, it's just, you need both prices to make a decision.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to highlight here, Justin, can you speak to the longevity and life expectancy of each of the options?
Yes, so permanent building option on the left, the 37.9, that's a 50-plus-year building. It's steel superstructure, concrete, it's a 50-plus-year building. The modulars, depending on the level of finish, level A, again, is more durable, but you're still, it all depends on maintenance, but you're still looking at a 20- to 25-year life expectancy for modulars for level A. Level B is even less, depending on, again, maintenance here, 15 years or so for life expectancy for these modulars. So a level A is approximately high level half of what a permanent building would be for longevity.
Now, you say the buildings should be last for 50 years. How about the mechanical stuff on the building?
Mechanical is something that's, you're gonna have capital repairs throughout. I mean, you're not gonna get a unit that's good for 50 years. You may be able to limp it along, but you're gonna need, you're gonna need infrastructure upgrades throughout its life.
In either.
In any of these options, yeah.
Well, yeah, no, but I was just curious, 10 years, 25 years?
It all depends honestly on the systems that are selected. That really makes a big difference, and so you're probably, I mean, it truly honestly all depends 15, 20 years, but when we say a 50-year building, we mean finishes. So floors, durability of walls, your roof, your, all of that stuff, your actual envelope systems are gonna fluctuate within that for capital, but when we say 50 years, it's the
So again, I mentioned earlier, the school committee, the building committee presented to the school committee at our meeting last week. The school building committee voted unanimously at our last meeting to move forward a recommendation to pursue option one, the brick-and-mortar building. It was the option recommended prior to the expanded feasibility, and based on life expectancy, pricing, and durability, the building committee unanimously felt that this was still the best option to recommend to the town. They also voted unanimously that night to bring forward a warrant article to the select board for consideration to request funding for the design service portion of a building project at Fall Town Meeting. Jump forward one more. I do, Mike, I think you're here solo tonight, because Mike Ryan wasn't able to make it, but do you wanna join us to talk about these? Do you want me to high-level preview it?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay, all right. So some of the reasons that the committee opted to recommend the brick-and-mortar. First of all, when we looked at the detached modulars, there is a additional safety and security concerns. If we ever had an emergency situation, police are responding to three separate sites, or trying to secure and lock down three different, three different locations all at once. Additionally, there is a negative impact on student time on learning. So if we went with the detached modular solution, we would have to have students traveling back and forth daily for lunch, for special subject classes, art, music, physical education. That takes time away from instruction. It also has some challenges with how we would deliver specialized services, so speech, language, special education services, how we would, either students having to come into the building to access those services, or staff having to travel to multiple sites. Again, in one of the options, you could see the, the single story, which we priced because we thought we might generate or see some savings, a little story addition, but that would result in a significant loss of field and place space for students. All of the modulars have higher maintenance costs and higher, they're less energy efficient, higher cost for heating and for cooling, longevity 15 to 20 years, which was, which would mean that the town would probably be looking at another building project in 15 to 20 years at a higher price point. And again, higher long-term costs for replacing or updating the building. Brick-and-mortar with a single campus, safer for students to travel independently throughout the building. We did talk about with the detached additions, if a child's sick, needs the nurse, they need to be escorted, they can't travel. We don't have an open campus because of the age of students, so they could independently travel through the building. There's no negative impact on time and learning, staff and service delivery models, so for shared staff, it's easier for people to pull groups of students from different classrooms or different grade levels to provide services. Maintenance costs are lower, heating and cooling more efficient, and the longevity or the long-term life expectancy of the building is more than, almost double. And finish A, more than double for finish B. Did I miss anything, Mike?
No, I think you covered most of it. I mean, I was...
Come on up. Right next to Peter. I can give you my...
Thank you. All right. Hangover here. I'm one of the citizen volunteers that the select board was nice enough to appoint to the building advisory committee, and I really feel like we went pretty thoroughly through all the options. I mean, we talked about the idea of possibly leasing space. There just doesn't seem to be any buildings in the area that would fit the bill. It's one of those situations where because of state mandates from, again, this is out of my depth, but I understand there's classroom number limitations with the union contract with the teachers. The way I view it, even if that was changed, at some point, based on the upward swing of the demographics, you're gonna still run out of room, and we'll be further down the road, the building will cost more, and we'll kind of have the same conversation in, you know, probably another couple of years. In terms of the permanent building decision over the modulars, I mean, I really thought there'd be much more savings, quite frankly, with the modulars. I was kind of surprised when, when the, you know, Justin presented the modulars, that's pretty much materially not huge savings compared to the permanent. And then when you look at the fact that they have, at best, a 25-year life, it's kind of like a penny wise, pound foolish decision to, in, I think, the view of the committee, or at least my personal view, to not invest the extra couple million dollars over the span of 50 years, especially when you consider the fact that if, you know, if we're having this conversation in 15 to 25 years, it's gonna cost significantly more, and we'll say, boy, hell yeah, I wish we went for the permanent building back in 2024. So I think that pretty much covers most of it. And I know, I'm sure citizens of town are gonna have a lot of questions, I'm sure the select board's gonna have questions. I know we'll have some forums to address those, and we could go further in depth on any of the things presented, and if we don't have answers, I'm sure we could find them for you guys. So that's pretty much all I have to say about that.
And I would just say, I think all three of the community members came to the same universal conclusions. If you wanna jump to the next slide, just wanted to talk a little bit about why the committee chose to move this forward now. Again, if we move forward with the building project recommendation now, we're still three years from that being ready to open. There's a year of design work, then we have to bid it out for construction, and then there's construction. So the earliest that we would be ready to move forward, if we move forward now, is the fall of 2027. In that time period, we are expecting more and more students to enroll, and we are out of space now. So we are trying to avoid a situation where we will have to look at a temporary option to how the students until a project could be completed, because that, to us, is a waste of town revenue and resources. Additionally, again, we're out of space at the H L of Day. If we get no new enrollment, we will be out of space in the Freeman, based on our population's moving up in the next two years. If we get the predicted enrollment, we're probably out of space in a year. Again, the building project would take three years. If we delay until the spring, then we would be looking at an addition not ready to open into the fall of 2028. Just to be aware, we've already delayed the project multiple times, and there is a cost that comes with that. So annual construction costs escalate between 4% and 12%. We've now applied to the MSBA three times. The likelihood of receiving any funding through MSBA is almost nonexistent. However, even if we move forward, the committee can still opt to apply. If we do somehow get invited into the MSBA project, we would, we would probably have to do some additional work that wasn't done in feasibility, but it doesn't preclude us from still trying to apply. But it doesn't delay if we are declined again, the whole project by another year. When we first had this cost estimates done for the building construction work, based on the conceptual design that the Lansbury architect sent the design plans out to the same project estimator that AI3 used, and that was in 2019, and at that time, the price estimate we got back, and this is just for site and construction, it doesn't include the soft costs, which are furniture, technology, those kinds of things. Those usually run about an additional 25%, but this project in 2019 was estimated at 12, almost 13 million. 2023, that went to 27, so almost doubled. 2024, it's up to 29. So it's the price of delaying plus the potential for additional temporary costs were really unappealing to the committee, because the need's not gonna go away, and the longer we wait, the more the project will cost. Anything, Grace or Major, you wanna add?
No, I think you covered it. I mean, it feels like the committee, at the end of months and months of review, we got to the point where we were saying, we're out of space now, and I think, at least from my perspective, the worst-case scenario would be, we have to bring temporary modulars on site while we then go back to the drawing board at a higher cost to complete feasibility again for this project. And so, you know, given the state of where we are now and how the students are stretched, it just feels like the right time. Understanding that it is a significant financial impact to the town, which...
Now, are we gonna run out of space in 10 years, though?
I mean, the only, you can only do an enrollment, oh, we can only do enrollment forecasts out 10 years, because there's too much changing in the world. But the, what we are asking is, right now, we have five pre-K classrooms. The addition would have seven. It would give us a little bit of capacity to absorb new growth that we're projecting. Upstairs, it gives us six classrooms. You know, we are estimating that, based on the projections we have, this will carry us through the next 10 years, and then we have a little bit of flexibility, not a lot. We didn't wanna come with, we didn't wanna overbuild.
Well, yeah, but overbuild for an extra $5 million rather than a 40, a $50 million building in 10 years, it makes sense to spend the extra $5 million now.
Yep.
I mean, this school's 10 years old now, and with another 37, again, 10 years later.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. So when the Freeman Kennedy was built, it was built with the MSBA. The town, I wasn't there at the time, so I came, went for the ribbon cutting, so it had already been built. But MSBA will not allow you to build for future growth, and they won't refund that cost, and the town opted not to build additional classroom spaces at that time. So I can't speak to that, but I hear what you're saying.
Right, well, stake was raised 10 years ago, well, we couldn't, they're not telling us what side we can build it now.
Right. So with the addition on the upstairs, it gives us six additional classrooms, which will carry us through, through, through the projected enrollment, but there is some flexibility with some of those other spaces. So we could be in a situation where we're doing, similar to what we're doing now, repurposing some spaces, shifting some office spaces.
Yeah, but that will, that will carry you, what, an extra three or four years?
I mean, I can't project what's gonna happen townwide, but it will, we expect that this will see the town through for a significant number of years, at which time you might be looking at, I mean, H L of Day is 35 years old, there might be different needs that the town has at that time, but I would say we're confident that this will carry the town through more than 10 years, 10, 15 years out at the minimum, with some flexibility if situations change. Anybody else?
I think, I mean, personally, I've been on the, I'm in my seventh year...
I think, I mean, personally, I've been on the, I'm in my seventh year on the school committee, and Ingrid was working on this for a year or two before I jumped in. So, I mean, anecdotally, there's no question that there's a problem from my perspective. I have a 16-year-old child, 10 years ago, when he went through kindergarten, or first grade, I guess, there were five classrooms. This year, kindergarten and first grade is nine classrooms. So it has almost doubled. There's too many students for the space that we have. I think we were very cognizant of trying to find a solution that would meet the long-term needs of the district, but bear in mind the fiscal reality of the folks who live in town. That will now include myself. I am happy to support this project. I will not have any students enrolled in the school system when the door is open in this building. So I, you know, I mean, I think long-term, thinking through the lens of both someone who has worked on this and as a taxpayer, I would like to see a solution that has longevity attached to a high price tag, and that's why I lean towards the permanent building solution, and will be the most likely to meet the needs that we know are definitely going to exist. I wish that we could find a demographer who would say, under oath, in 20 years, this is exactly how many students you're going to have. None of them will. So it's, it becomes walking a fine line between, you know, how much is a reasonable amount to ask for, what are the actual known long-term needs, and trying to work within what we know is a, a large price point for a large building expansion.
Right, I was just curious, how much to overbuild it. If it costs an extra $5 million, and we can get that much extra space, then run out of space in 10 years and have to spend another 40 or 50 million dollars, it makes more sense to spend $5 million now.
No, I'm with you. And if, if I was confident that we might need that extra $5 million worth of space, I would, I would have been the first one to say, I think that we need to ask for that space. But through the feasibility process, the initial schematics we were looking at were, I think, something like 5,000 square feet. It was, it was a bigger footprint that we were looking at originally, and we have been trying to, to ask for what we know will meet the needs of the district and be a responsible ask.
With a little bit of flexibility that we can respond to.
If I may, thank you. It's a very detailed presentation, and I appreciate the information. The purpose of this meeting isn't to really discuss the merits, the pros and cons of the project. The purpose of this meeting is for this board to decide whether or not to put this on as a warrant article. That is the request that's before us. There'll be a lot of discussion as to the pros and cons of the, of the project forward and stem. You all know, we've all lived here a long time, I've been through about a half a dozen of these, it'll be a good debate, but you guys have done a wonderful job. We're very grateful for the work you put into this. One thing that I did not see in here, and I'm just curious about, is I haven't seen an analysis of any operational costs associated with it, but I'm sure at some point for your presentation, you'll have that, we don't have to talk about it tonight. The only comment I wanted to make is that you're asking for $4,345,042. Just so you're aware, we cannot absorb that in the budget. So that cannot be a short-term bond that we eat, I say eat, bad way to say it, but in essence, we do, where those expenses would be part of our operational costs. So this would have to be a debt exclusion, just so that we all understand that, this would have to go to the voters as a debt exclusion. Okay?
And I don't know if you want, briefly, but Justin, if you want to talk about what's included in that design service, just for a broad overview, we have that here.
I mean, I think another time would be okay. I don't think we need to do that now. Your information is very detailed, and we've all had a chance to read it, but if the committee has any specific questions on it, please.
The only thing I would say, and just in the interest of transparency, I'm a retired educator, and so I know that the space, the space situation that's there is real, I know that it impacts students, it impacts student learning. It might think to yourself that, wow, you know, having music go around from class to class, it doesn't really matter, they're just gonna sing some songs they can sing at their desk. And music isn't like that anymore, like the things they do in music connects to what they're doing in reading, and, and it really, really matters that these spaces are part of, part of the kind of education we want to be offering our students at H.L. of Day and, and at Freeman Kennedy. So I believe that the project is needed, I believe that it's needed now. I was, I worked for the town in 17 when this whole began, so we needed, we knew that we needed it then. The only thing I would encourage you to do is really, MSBA would be a real benefit for us, and if you could also, Senator Roush has been so supportive of the schools, I would reach out to her and, and let her know our situation, so she knows what we're grappling with, and, and ask for her support directly, and I can help you contact her if you need that. But she's been very supportive, and any funding that we could get from the state would be beneficial for our community, so.
Yeah, I think the building committee felt that it's absolutely worth, you know, pursuing, and if there's any possibility, you know, we could weigh the, the value and what the savings would be against the potential escalation costs.
Certainly, yeah, I think the building committee, I mean, that's ultimately a school committee and select board choice, whether or not to apply to MSBA, but we would certainly support any application for any type of grant funding for the project.
And then let's wrap in our legislatures, because the legis, legis...
Legislators.
Thank you. Legislators, I knew that was wrong, and it didn't come out of my mouth.
We all have trouble with that word.
Yeah, because I think they can be really helpful to us and, and be a real, really helpful in this situation.
Yeah, and we have, in the past applications with the MSBA, worked with Representative Dooley and with others in, in terms of trying to support that process through MSBA, so we certainly will do that again. And again, when you talk about whether to move this in the warrant, if you have questions about what's included in that cost, they're in the slides and packet.
Okay. Any other questions on the request that's before us tonight? We'll have a chance to debate it under the warrant discussion, which is not very far down on the agenda, so.
Can I just say one last thing, is I really want to thank the building committee, it's a ton of work, so it's a lot of work, and so thank you to our community members and to the school board members, so we're on there, nice job on the work, and it's impressive, the, the amount of work and the timeliness that you got it completed in, so thank you.
Yeah, I will add that. I know the firm that you worked with, they're a very reputable firm, I compliment you on the detail of your work, this is a very thorough report, thank you. Further questions?
Nope.
Okay. Madam Chair, do you want to adjourn your meeting?
I am looking for a motion to adjourn our meeting for tonight. I hope so moved. Any further discussion? Just want to thank the SLU board for having us.
We always enjoy having you. Very much so. We never get an audience, so this is, this is a delight. But, you know, thank you all for the hard work you put in on this, thank you very much.
And thank you for, again, to the building committee for presenting, for Dr. Lari and Vicki for coming and presenting, to Justin, thank you so much. Hope this was informative.
You are all welcome to stay.
All those in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we are now back to our agenda items, and first on the list is public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public, public comment to see? Yes, ma'am. If you would give your name and address, we would appreciate it. Please, come on up for the microphone, so they'll hear you at home.
Get a comfy chair. They're little works for wear. There's three pages, but it is a really big font, don't worry, guys. Good evening, Mr. Lee and Mr. Roach, and Mrs. Mecklenburg, Mrs. Kristen Ballish, 15 Kingsbury Road in Norfolk. Mr. Lee, and I will just say that some of this might sound familiar, I might be a mind reader, but some of the comments in here have some phrasing you've previously used tonight. I am here to ask for your support in moving the school committee's building article to the warrant. As a brief introduction, I am a Norfolk resident of over a decade, which I know is very short for many people, but I'm very proud of it. I'm a former member of the town government study committee and a former member of the advisory committee for Norfolk. In my day job, I am a nonprofit CFO overseeing capital projects for a campus of five historic buildings on a very limited budget. So please know that I am acutely aware and understand the challenges every time we here in Norfolk are faced with deferred maintenance, capital projects. I know there's literally never a good time to do one, ever, and yet they still must be done. As an aside, I'm currently doing a chiller replacement, and so I shuddered a bit when I saw the slide, I had no idea that we were also considering that. I can tell you that they're usually 500 to, 500,000 to a million per chiller, and they last about 20 to 25 years, so I actually can add something tonight. However, I am not here to debate the merits of the project. I don't think that's what we're talking about this evening. Others have covered this ground far better than I can, and instead, I'm here to say that based on the work that I have seen done and redone over the last seven years, I believe the issue is ready for public vote. Most recently, as you know, the select board and advisory committee asked the school committee to refresh the data, bring in a group of diverse perspectives and backgrounds, to analyze alternative avenues to address the issue. The volunteers were selected by this very body, the select board. At that time, I'll be honest, frustrated, and I said so at town meeting, because I know from personal experience that every year a capital project is delayed, you see at least 5% increase in costs, this said more, but I know it's at least five. However, from my time on advisory, I also recognized that the intent was to lift every rock, cross every T, dot every I, every other hokey phrase you can think of, in order to bring the best warrant article forward. So now, today, that everything that has been asked for has been done, the information is ripe, it's current, and there's nothing further to explore that would make this any more ready for the town to vote on it. A delay would result in a waste of money and time spent by our town over the last several years, as well as increase our costs if the project does eventually move forward. We all know the long list of capital or override projects in the last 15 years that have gone to town meeting for a vote, and all of them have been put to the warrant by the select board, and because that's ideally the right and best process, to treat this article any differently would signal to the building committee volunteers that their work may have been done in vain, or even worse, not in good faith. Such an outcome could have a detrimental effect, because why would a citizen choose to volunteer their time and expertise if the work is ultimately ignored? To that end, I really do think that this article should be placed on the warrant using the same process as prior similar articles. For what it's worth, I do not have any idea or expectation about how this article would ultimately fare, I don't think any of us really do, but it's critical that we give the residents of Norfolk the opportunity to officially weigh in at this time. Until it's resolved one way or another, yes or no, we're leaving residents and their families in limbo, in particular, the schools, and who are unable to make any real long-range plans until it's settled in one direction or another. And I think there's lots of residents who just really would like an answer sooner rather than later, so we can all kind of move on and make some new decisions about, you know, all these different things in our lives. So thank you again for considering moving this article forward to the warrant, so that we, as residents and voters, can have our chance to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Any on our Zoom link? I do not see any hands. All right, thank you very much. We have a few housecleaning items, and then we'll get right to the question at hand. Justin?
In the board's packet, you have a consideration of approval for, for the town hall for a couple of events. One is the Cactus and Succulent event, which is gonna be on September 3, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but also the Norfolk Lions Santa Parade. The board previously voted on a date for this of December 1st, they actually are changing the date to December 8th. Excuse me, reverse, sorry, apologize, 8th to 1st, thank you. And we've contacted Public Safety, and there are no issues regarding those, those dates or those events off the town hall.
Okay, any questions, anybody? Motion to approve?
I move that we approve the use of Town Hill for the Cactus and Succulent Societies Festival and the Norfolk Lions Santa Parade.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? No opposition?
Do we need to say the dates of the motion?
Uh, yeah, well, a friendly amendment, I think, would be appropriate. The date should be there, yes, my oversight, thanks. Norfolk Lions Parade.
Just for future, as printed in the agenda.
As printed in the agenda, okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion for the Lions Parade to be moved from the 8th to the 1st?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, question at hand, the warrant.
So in the board's packet, you have a draft warrant at the moment. Typically, what we've done is I just give you a high level of what is on there, and I guess I'll do that, and then you guys can possibly talk about, you know, the schematic design article. The first few articles are sort of our boilerplate articles that you see pretty much every annual town meeting. You have prior year unpaid bills, we have none at the moment. You have budget transfers, and we've talked about those, that's typically what we do, capital stabilization transfers, et cetera, and things like that. Then we have capital expenditures from borrowing. If the board remembers, we had presented a FEMA grant that we received for fire apparatus, we potentially may have capability to purchase the apparatus, so we might have an article, have an item for that, for that truck there, potential ban, so we'll, we'll talk with Todd and I will talk, and we'll present the board an idea regarding that. Article four is when we do all of our capital expenditures. The schematic design article. Then you have the Mill River Road land purchase article that the board has heard from our DPW director, hear reports, and then the assessing bylaws change that I highlighted previously, and then a slew of some of the, the planning board changes for accessory buildings, et cetera, definition of story, half-story, and then we'll finalize it with street exemptions. So overall, it's a pretty light article for the fall. That's where we're at. Pass it to the chairman.
All right, so the warrant is still open, we have a request to put an additional article on, so I will open it for discussion, and we can have discussion, or if your mind is made up, we can go from there. So Kevin, I will turn to you first.
No discussion at this time.
Okay. Do you have any further discussion?
About the, the school warrant? I think that we should add that to our, the warrant, I believe that that's appropriate.
Your opinion as well?
Yes.
You have unanimous support. So we will add it to the book, to the warrant for the November meeting. Do I have a motion to move? I have a motion, I just want to change the wording, I will get Todd to clean up the wording, but this will be a debt exclusion, just to make that very clear, but we will add it to the warrant for the November meeting. You have, is there a motion to do so?
What I would say regarding that is, we've planned all along, we've sent this to Bond Council and our town council, we've planned all along, and we're gonna be pretty transparent about it, it would have to be a debt exclusion, we can't cover this with a levy. So the, we've gotten Bond Council approval for that, so the way the article's crafted is one. I think if the board were to vote to execute the warrant as is, I always like to say, put the caveat with any town council edits purposes, which are usually small in grammar cases, so.
All right, we need a motion to add this to the warrant.
Execute the warrant, however you want.
Do it, I move that we, the school warrant with any edits that might be brought forward by town council.
Second.
The warrant for fall town meeting. I'm sorry, I stumbled through that.
We'll, we'll get it right, we're close enough, we're close enough. All right, do I have a second, any further discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It will be on the warrant.
Nothing, then, can I get just a formal vote from the board to just execute the warrant, just for that final process?
And I, we should also vote to close the court.
All right, I move that we execute the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the warrant.
I move that we close the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for your hard work on this.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You're welcome to stay.
No takers there.
But we do not fault you for leaving.
No, not even in the least.
I haven't seen my kids since last fall, I've been going to too many building meetings.
Yeah, just, just one thing, as a general discussion item for a second, while we're in the warrant, I, it won't take long. Does everyone have this?
Yes.
Okay. Just, you have to be aware, and we all have to be aware, that we have Tri County staring ass in the face, that too is gonna be a debt exclusion. And we're gonna have to think very carefully how we bring this information forward, because most of the taxpayers, I'm guessing, at least the ones I've talked to in the town in Norfolk, do not know that the fire station has hit their tax bill yet, and it will hit their tax bill in January. And the average household tax increase is gonna be around $450 for the fire station and another hundred dollars potentially for Tri County. This information has to be communicated to everybody before, it's part of what's communicated in November. There's one part that bothered me about going forward in the spring, is that people will not have the knowledge of the impact that the fire station will have on their tax bill prior to having that vote. to having that vote. So as long as that information is communicated, let the taxpayers decide. It's up to them. But they need to have a full understanding of the tax implications of these votes. So that's my only comment on that.
Right. Yeah. We should bring that up at town meeting before, you know, just open and transparent. Just let them know.
It's not for or against. It's not an opinion. It's just people need to have as much information as they can on what the tax implications are of every vote they take. And then however they vote, that's democracy. That's the way it should work. And we're not contesting elections here. So whatever they want is what we're going to do. But I do want to be sure that this information gets out because Tri County, this is not an option for us. That's approved. It's coming. We have to pay for it. Fire station has been approved. It hasn't hit the tax bill yet. It will in your January tax bill. Information needs to be shared to the ends of folks before the November meeting, just so they're informed and have a full understanding of the implications. Not a for or against statement. I just believe that people should have all the information. So that's it. Okay. Okay. Our favorite conversation.
All right. I'm going to ask Todd and Blair to join me up here a bit. But I'll just give a quick introduction in terms of the fiscal year 25 sewer rates. As the board is aware, you know, the town voted to implement a wastewater district via special act. Last year, we implemented our first year of sewer rates under that sort of new ballgame, I would say, so to speak. Last year, the board made a decision to subsidize the rate at about 40%. And so we provide some information on what that was on the fiscal year 24. Sewer rates, essentially, because of that decision, we had to utilize about $45,633 in retained earnings. And this year, we are trying to look forward to adopting fiscal year 25 rates. Staff have presented a couple of options based on what was discussed the previous year. The board had indicated doing a phased approach in terms of increasing, you know, the sewer rate and the percentage allocated there. I think the board also highlighted understood, you know, the impact on the users of that sewer system, considering what the agreement was before and how it was being utilized. It wasn't the same scenario. So we understand the impact there. So the board has sewer rate presentation in its packet. I'm going to ask our DPW director just to give you an update in terms of that sewer system there, and then we can answer any questions financially for the board. Blair?
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So for, though I know Kevin wasn't here, previous discussions here, so I'd like to just begin with a brief overview of the system itself, dating back a few years. Obviously, this is something that goes back to 2015 and well beyond. But in 2018, environmental partners inspected a gravity sewer during the infiltration and inflow analysis, which included the gravity main down to the tank across from where Silas was, as well as manholes and things of that nature. In 2021, Woodard and Curran did a condition and assessment report. Of that report, there was an integration of things that should be repaired and fixed. The initial table had 14 items in it, and all 14 of those have been completed, including building repairs. The, coming up beyond that, there are a few other items that I foresee coming down the pipe that aren't here quite yet. One of those is that the, being that the gravity sewer was inspected in 2018, we are six years out, and that should be coming back around to have that done once again. Beyond that, there was a recommendation from Woodard and Curran in 2021 that an internal confined space inspection of the tanks be done. I anticipate that most likely in FY26 that will come down the pipe and with a possible or probable cost of about $40,000. As of 2024, Woodard and Curran has been contacted for a request for quotes to update their condition and assessment report since they did the first one. I anticipate that they would already have a lot of information and will not need to start from scratch, which should save, have considerable savings. Regarding the current budget, as of this morning, salaries are on budget for this point in the fiscal year. Expenses are below expected levels, but keep in mind that sampling mandates from DEP have changed and continue to change. Chemical prices are up, and utilities, as everybody can attest to, are a wild card on any given day. I have been fighting with utilities over a variety of different aspects of town from water pump, electricity, and, you know, it's hard to justify sometimes the delivery rate versus the electricity itself. So that's a never-ending, ongoing battle. At this time, I believe that the wastewater treatment plant is in fair to good condition. Being that we are three years removed from the plant's last in-depth inspection, I believe that due to the corrosive nature of a wastewater treatment plant, we will find a number of items that will need to be addressed when the next inspection is carried out. So that's where we are with that. I certainly have lists of the 14 items that over the last couple of years have been done and inspected, including a number of internal issues as well as the building. With regards to the sewer rate forecast, this was for, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
So FY24, obviously, as we laid out the budget, we take a look at historical factors as well as current trends and where services and markets are. So we anticipate with all the things that encompass the budget, 203,618. The actual revenue expenses were 129,541, and retained earnings utilized, 45,633, which equated to a 40% allocation for users, $308.53. It was the majority of sewer systems due with uses of water. Do you have anything you want to add to that, or are we?
So the revenues that account for the 83,908 are user fees, but also some interest that was attributable to the monies that were held in the reserve accounts for the wastewater treatment plant. So that was about $2,000 additional income. Total of the 83 versus the 129 accounts for the retained earnings usage of 45,633. In the budgeting process for fiscal year 25, we've also utilized $70,000 of retained earnings to compensate for what the expectation is as far as revenues. Obviously, that's going to fluctuate depending on what the ultimate rate is going to be set at.
There we go. FY25. So when we laid out the operating budget for FY25, as with any budget, there are clearly some unknowns in there. Some of those unknowns are, at the time, we were working on negotiating with unions for labor rates, where there was also issues with, again, utilities, chemicals, sampling, services such as monthly maintenance and pump inspections. So there were some educated decisions made when laying that out. So there was a slight increase over FY24. Then backing out the facility users, we came up with what the overall cost would be, 40%, which was 320,05. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that one?
No, that's good.
Okay. Next slide. So for FY25, based on 211,231, based on 66 overall users, I've laid out, Todd and I laid out some options here for review, based on the 60%, 70%, and 80% options, based on previous discussions about ramping up overall percentages. So those are the ones that I put before you.
So for expenses that were actually incurred in FY24, since that was close to the 129, trying to set a rate, knowing that expenses are only going up, as we, both Blair and I have gone through the analysis of the system itself, trying to keep that in mind to balance it. You know, if you come in at a 60% total that you're going to be receiving is 126, which is still going to be less than the 129 of last year's expenses. This year's is going to be just anticipated to be a little bit more, based again on the increases from the services that we have on the plant itself. Option two dovetails into kind of equalize what we anticipate for overall expenses of the plant. So there will be little to no impact on retained earnings. And then on a going-forward basis, when you do the rate reviews, the idea here is to have money set aside, just like we do on the water, so that you can anticipate to have some of those retained earnings on a going-forward basis to help with all the different plant facilities, repair and restoration that needs to be taken care of.
And to add on to Todd's point, I mean, this is a 24/7/365 facility, and at any time, you know, anything ever breaks when you don't need it. So this is a crucial infrastructure piece, and obviously, in an emergency, if something were to happen to it, we do periodic maintenance. We keep track of the different parts of the facility and try to keep up with them, but that doesn't mean that at any time, something crucial might not break. So there needs to be funds there to address those if and if they do happen.
Okay. Questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair, just one thing that I want to emphasize, and the reason why we're sort of emphasizing retained earnings is back in 2018, when this was discussed, Bob McGee, the director of public works at that moment, there was a memo given regarding this. And it was based on the understanding retained earnings, the plan was to withhold 20% of revenues each year to build the reserve fund. And I think the board understands why, and we've heard from Todd and Blair, why reserve funds are important. But it proceeded to say the accrued savings would lessen the financial burden on the customers for major repairs, planned upgrades, emergencies. So last year, we used 40-plus thousand dollars of retained earnings in order to subsidize the rate to minimize the impact on the users. And also, I'd like to say that, in fact, compared to the fiscal year 23 sewer rate, the fiscal year 24 sewer rate was lower than the preceding year. We did that, understanding, and I think acknowledging that, you know, it was a tough environment for customers to change landscape, right? But we've got to be very cautious about using retained earnings. Because if something major were to happen there, you know, that would largely be felt by the customers. We would have to allocate that on their bills. And those expenses can sometimes be really exponentially large. So I just wanted the board to know that, and I'm sure there's questions regarding what we've given so far.
All right. So I'm not a sewer expert, but I've done a lot of learning. And it seems to me that, first of all, the board, I think our decision last year shows that the board understands the impact on the residents. So we're very, have empathy for that situation. I'm newly on a fixed income myself, so I understand, I understand the reality of that. And so I have a lot of empathy for that. However, we have, I think when I was meeting with Justin to really understand it at a deep level, if something were to happen, so we have a 20-year-old plant, is that correct? We have a 20-year-old plant, and it's well-maintained. We're doing the maintenance. It's well-maintained, but it is a 20-year-old plant. If something were to happen, the onus of that, anything that exceeded what we had in the reserve fund, would land on the residents. And I think that that is, that worries me a lot. And I would hate for that to happen, where there's something bad happens, and now you're getting a bill that's exponential. So I think revitalizing that retained earnings category so that we're able to continue to be proactive and not have that kind of catastrophic event for residents happen is super important. I think we were also...
Sorry. I thought I shut this off.
I'm going to give you a demerit there.
Give me two demerits.
Two demerits, Mr. Lee. So I think that we were also clear, we were generous last year, we were also clear that this was temporary, and that we needed to start taking steps. I also know that the team is working, and I know you won't feel it for a while, but they're working long-term to try to alleviate the pressure that's on the residents. That is not realistically in the close future, but it's coming. Like, we have things in the works that we're trying to take some pressure off of this. So I believe that I would support the recommendation of going to the 70%, realizing that that's a difficult number, and realizing that it could be way worse if there was a catastrophic event. So I'm grateful for the work that we're doing to maintain the facility so that we're being as proactive as possible. But I feel like the responsible thing to do is to start making sure that fund is there, because that fund is there to protect the residents. And so that's my current thinking. I'm open to new learning, because as I say, I'm not a expert on sewer.
Well, I don't think any of us are. So I think we're all on equal ground there. It is kind of tough on you, Kevin, because you were a part of that conversation last year when we went through this. I think there's agreement that it should be clearly understood that we have to raise it this year. I mean, we made that very clear last year when we subsidized it to its original amount. I agree with Anita. I know of several projects, or at least one in particular, that will have a major impact on the usage considerations, but it is still probably several years away, probably more likely three years away.
Right.
But there is growing interest in some of that property being utilized. I honestly favor the 60%. And my rationale is this. One, the plant is in good condition, and you and I have talked about that. There is always the opportunity for unanticipated expenses. But as I understand it, and you correct me, that at least the major components of that operation, the major functional components that are big bucks, if you will, are pretty good shape. And that they're not, again, anything can happen, but they're not likely to cause us any issues. And that we would have sufficient retained earnings to meet other types of less intrusive considerations if that were to happen. I am very sensitive to the fact that we are making a substantial increase to these folks. And so I personally favor the 60%. It's a step up. It's certainly an increase from the 40%, but that was understood from day one when we did this last year. And we cannot subsidize it the way we did last year. So that's my own opinion. I think that retained earnings that we would keep under option one, barring a catastrophic event, which quite frankly, I think would probably outweigh option two as well. So I don't see a major difference between option one and option two for a catastrophic event. You correct me if I'm wrong.
I agree with you.
So that said, I would like to see a little less pressure put on the homeowners and go with option one. Kevin, your thoughts?
I agree, as long as it's understood that it's probably going to go up next year to 70%, where all the expenses go up.
No question.
All right. As long as we are saying that we understand that we are gradually growing, which we said very clearly last year, and I feel like last year was a gift, because people's rates actually went down from the year before. And so as long as we understand that we're growing toward that, I would be comfortable with the compromise of the 60. So we'll do the 60 with the understanding that next year, that we'll begin the conversation at 70.
Well, there is agreement. It will go up. Yeah, no question. Yeah. Barring something unforeseen happening.
But also, hearing from the board that we understand the impact of this decision, we care about the impact of this decision, and we're doing work behind the scenes to try to alleviate this long-term, so that there's possible, you're right, realistically, it could be...
It's three years away.
Realistically, it could be three years. But we're looking, we're aggressively working toward that end, understanding the situation.
Well, let me reframe that, three years. There is a, there is conversation, in this sense, there is conversation. I spent a lot of time with the chair of the planning board on this. There is conversation regarding a specific project that is, there is a P and L on it right now, P and S, excuse me. But there are a lot of open questions, and it requires zoning, changes, and things of that nature. But if it ever gets to a point where there is a plan, then there are opportunities to get some upfront subsidies. The project doesn't have to be completed to create some revenue to offset some of these costs. So when I say three years, I think that's sort of the project length. If this does go forward, there might be some shorter-term opportunities for the developer to, if we can get the appropriate zoning done, for the developer to contribute to this at an earlier stage. So there is some optimism on this. But...
And I have been working with...
Conversation at this point.
Developer, based on what capacities are, what the eventual costs might be, and working through all of those with water, with sewer, with, you know, road access, curb cuts, and so forth. So I've been working diligently with parties to try to...
We all have that.
Right. Kind of map that out. So you were correct.
All right. So I think we have a consensus then, that we would go with option one. Am I right?
Justin?
Again, no, I would just add to that. The reason why we're emphasizing this, to be transparent, I think we've spoken with Peter and Ray about this. You know, the only way this rate can go lower for users is by adding users, because there's a limited amount of users right now. So that's why I think you're hearing from the board, the emphasis on trying to get more users, because that's the only way that rate can go further. I do want to give an update regarding one of the other action items that we did at town meeting. We, the town meeting, supported us doing another special act to try and secure some further funding. That act has been drafted. I've contacted Representative Vaughn and Senator Alsh to know that we prepared, and we would like their support in moving that forward. we would like their support in moving that forward. And so the minute where the legislative session is open, again, we'll be ready to file that immediately moving forward as well. So, you know, we're trying to be proactive to that end, you know, understanding the pressures on the users of that, of that facility at the moment.
Okay. Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve option one as recommended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Are you taking this?
No. This isn't a public hearing. No, I'm sorry. Where are we? I'm sorry.
All those in favor.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Option one. Apologize, but this is not a public hearing. We can't get into a given topic on this. All right. Justin, what is next?
Well, the next item is an update, terms of municipal aggregation. I think the board, I had a small update for the board regarding where we are in the municipal aggregation process, and we have Colonial Power Group here who is going to give you a presentation where we're at and what we're doing moving forward. And so Denise and Mark, thank you.
Good evening. Mark Capodona, Colonial Power, Five Mile Royal Ave, Baltimore, Mass.
Hi, Denise Howard, also from Colonial Power.
Sorry, I was on mute. Joseph Capodona, also from Colonial Power.
Welcome.
So just a quick update. So back in May, we filed a plan on behalf of the town. Unfortunately, right after the town filed its plan, when we did ask the department what they would like us to see work under the old precedent or these new guidelines that we were working on when we filed, they told us to work under the old precedent. And once the guidelines were issued, they asked that Colonial file the plan under the new guidelines. So we just filed in August 23rd, the updated plan under the new guidelines. This is good news, and the reason I'm going to tell you it's good news is the department is committed to getting an order out in 120 days here or there and abouts. They don't commit to the 120 days, that's their goal. But in that scenario, you can expect by the end of the year, beginning of next year, you're going to get an order. So what was taking three or four years, we expect to take three or four months at this point. And at that point, we would come back, discuss with Justin about market conditions, you know, where the market is, where basic services, and those kind of issues. But right now, you've already had your public hearing, that's been approved, so there's nothing the town needs, hopefully, if we get an order before the end of the year. So we're cautiously optimistic we're going to be back to see you near year-end, if not the beginning of '25, to discuss next steps, market conditions, and actually go out to the market and see what's there for, you know, the town of Norfolk. But if somebody had any questions, we're more than willing to answer any questions tonight, the plan, the market, so forth and so on.
Has anything changed since the last time you came before us, other than the speeding up of the timeline?
We filed a new plan only because we were asked to do so, but no, nothing else has changed. Yes, there was a public hearing at the Department of Public Utilities, went through without issue, but nothing has changed. We're still in the queue waiting for an order.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all good news.
Very good news, yes.
Yes. Okay. I don't have any questions. Great.
No questions.
That was easy. Usually we hear about delays, not expedited processes, so thank you for that.
You're more than welcome. We're happy to deliver good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. All right. Justin is just outside briefly for a second, so want to take about a three-minute break?
We can absolutely do that.
Is that agreeable with everyone?
Yes.
Do we have to vote on that, Amanda?
So, no, we don't. We just need our friend back here in the room to put us on hold for three minutes. We just need our friend back here in the room to put us on hold for three minutes.[533.79]